Be willing to push it along, whether we agree or disagree. At least, I mean, it's a vigorous discussion. It's okay to disagree. We can still be friends. We still have to, a responsibility.
I don't want to be your friend.
Well, that's, that's. I trust you.
I think you stopped. You were like, well.
Sometimes my sarcasm is so advanced that people just think I'm mean.
But I, I, my, I trust that we can neutralize.
Yeah.
Well, I don't.
But I just told you, I asked you, once we get the budget back, because I'm sure we'll talk again. As our rep.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, guys.
I forgot we were doing this tonight.
Yeah, that's a good sit too. So.
There was no memo sent out. You're good.
I'll share what I've shared, I think, before.
Oh, quick.
Um.
Are you ready?
What I, what I'd really like to do is just have a, we don't need to talk about details necessarily. What I'd like to do is frame how we want to do next Tuesday. Because I, I mean, I, I told you, A, I, I don't want, I have an aversion to wasting anyone's time. Like, I don't want to do that. On the other hand, we have a lot of things we need to reconcile before we are done. And next week, we've allocated four hours. Um, and I think, I, I, I think we've all looked at this with enough detail to have a sense that there is this three percent raise for the county that, that Todd has, um, put in front of us at, at a cost. And there is this sheriff's con, sheriff's department contract that is put before us. And then there are, there's this other group of, we can kind of do it by, and I, I was just kind of going through, tell you how I was doing, I was kind of going by department of, these are the things that they pretty much said we needed to do. You know, like, like they have a contract that is going to cost this much, or, you know, there's, there's going to be this much increase in FICA and, and whatever. The type of, that kind of thing. Does that make sense? So, but the numbers don't add with the amount of money that we have projected. So, we're going to have, I think, we're going to have to frame how we do that. We're either not going to be able to give three percent, or we're going to be able to give three percent to some, but not to, to everyone. Um, or we're not, we're not going to be able to fulfill some contractual obligations, or we're going to have to, um, attend to the sheriff's department's request. Uh, that is a contract with, they've signed it with the, with the commissioners. And there's, no one has signed.
Nobody has signed.
Right.
Can you guys speak to the public in here?
I don't think they've.
Well, you're right, you're right, but I don't want to say that I don't want to necessarily fund it either. What I would like to say is, and, and I apologize because I wasn't prepared for tonight. Um, and so I will be prepared for next week to talk further on that. Um, I just, I need to look at it and see if there's a way that we can compromise on, on it.
Do you have a copy of it?
I do now, yes, I do. I did get the correct, correct one. So, um.
You can forward that to me?
I'll forward it to the whole council. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I do.
Is everybody?
Actually, if you would do that, should.
Yes. Kara got me the right one. I, well, I started looking at the, when she sent me, I'm like, this was the one that they had last year that they wanted us to, um, approve early. And so then she sent me the correct one this week. And I have not had a chance to. I opened it quick and looked at it real quick, and then, but I haven't really done, looked at it. So, I will send that, I'll forward that to the council, yes.
I got one from one of the weeks ago. But, so who sent me that one? I would love to see if it's, I'm pretty sure.
Shouldn't it be the same one? Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make that a paper, I guess, yeah.
I think we need to start it, we need to start it with the bigger areas, but I also.
Well, this is what I'm saying. I mean, there are these, I, I jotted a few areas that were, were larger items. One was a three percent raise across the board. One was the election office, because it's an election year. One was the sheriff's department, uh.
Have we heard back from, on that?
Yes.
You have? Okay.
Yes.
Can that be shared with the council?
What's that?
Can that be shared?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll send it along, actually, as it occurs to me, she sent it to, to Jonathan and to I, but we'll, we'll pass it along. Because it was a savings of. Um, yeah, she, she was able to find savings that brought it from.
Hold on, can you record those two on the mic though, Todd?
No.
No, I, I really need your mic, so, but I've turned it down.
Okay, well, we'll turn it back on then. Sorry about that.
I can run on lines.
Uh, give me a moment, and I will, I can give you the, I can give you the, the large number. It was. Mr. Colt may be great with numbers, but not with.
I'm a sound engineer.
Okay, so.
Is this, is that better? Hello?
Speeding factors.
Is that the podium, or which one?
Turn that one off.
I got the podium and the other one down.
We're gonna, we're gonna get this taken care of.
So, anyway.
One of your thirty percent rises.
So, you're aware, their, their original request was eight twenty-seven five. And she's able to get it to about seven seventy-six, which was about fifty thousand down. But nonetheless.
Fifty thousand, fifty thousand?
No, no, fifty thousand is substantial.
Would you like to make the adjustments in the election board, why, why we're here?
If you, if we can do that, it'd be great.
Dr. Green, I have a question, and this may be unrealistic, I'm not sure, but is there a certain percentage across, when you take all the departments as a whole, and you say, what is the percentage that they're going up in their department? If we take that all the way across the board, and obviously, there's going to be slight exceptions for contractual things, could we just say, hey, here is your five, six, seven, whatever percent. Allocate it as you wish. And then, obviously, we'll have to address the contractual things, but is that an option to, and maybe, obviously, not this year, because we're so prolonged, but next year, we might, it might help us to not have to cut so much?
Well, again, that's a.
I just figure, start with.
Can, can you just, sorry. Um, here, here are the, here's, here's her numbers. Um, and I'll send, I'll send it along. Again, I think it's, it's a, it's a philosophy of approach, right?
Yeah, I think it's just avoiding all the cutting, and say, hey, here's a certain percentage I know that we can do. Stay within it, and then we can have, you know, a certain percentage of the overall budget line for contractual raises. I mean, I, some people won't like that, but we have to stay within.
So, the video is paused on the county website, so they're trying to fix that.
I don't know, that, that's something that's like.
Are you talking about just operating expenses?
Right, operating expenses.
Honestly, Jonathan, I don't, I don't even think we can do an increase much in operating expenses.
Because, because.
Would be to take a three percent raise and just offer three percent, whatever that amount is to the department.
Right.
And says, you can spend it however you want. You can put three percent in every big salary, or you can put it somewhere else. But I mean, that's, that's a.
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to the contractual things.
But then there are contractual obligations, right?
So, what we tried to nail down all the contractual items that we have, say, okay, what's left over after that? And then divvied up per department. And this is just kind of, in the future.
That's, that's going to be the negative.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm not sure there would be. So, what we did before, Todd, can you, uh, do you know offhand, uh, which we got through?
We got through the commissioners.
Which, which department?
The commissioners, because the last department we did.
Okay, that's.
And which numbers on the election board is?
Is there a budget for technology?
It's manual.
It's a manual.
Okay. Um, we have, so after the commissioners, we have the coroner's office.
No.
Uh, the coroner, coroner's office is, uh. That's what's next to the budget book.
Oh, so they have an alphabetical budget book, is it?
You know, you guys, give me, give me, one year, you put it in order by number, and the next year, it's very alphabetical order.
A lot easier.
It is. I have one question on the commissioners' budget, um, that I wanted to bring up. You wanted to add into our general fund budget, um, two things, uh, that normally were not paid without appropriation. And they've always been paid without appropriation, and that they have not been included in the budget. So, I'm fine with putting them in the budget, but then I think we need to have consideration for additional funds to pay to those two line items. Does that make sense?
Well, I think we, one of them, we adjusted the tax where, I think we ended up putting our net in there, not the total.
So, the tax refunds.
Budget for that and the revenue as well, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Because you're, I don't want to say you're penalizing us, but you're penalizing us to say, okay, now you've got to put this three hundred thousand dollars in your budget, and you're going to have to put it in your general fund budget, where before, we didn't have it in our budget, we still paid. They just wanted it in there because they, yeah, they just wanted a more true budget, which, which is wonderful, because they wanted an account for that.
I'm okay with that.
Exactly, and I see what you're saying.
But I'm saying that you need to give me the revenue, additional revenue to pay for those, those two line, I think it was.
Yeah, they, they were tax refunds and examination records collectively about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
There's no, there's nothing to go back.
No, I, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, I know we budget at eighty percent of our, our property tax, okay? And so, but we've always paid those because we have more than eighty percent that comes in on property tax. That's how we were able to pay them without appropriation, right? Because the money was there.
Right, or, or your unexplained appropriations.
Yes, so my point is that if we're going to have to put it now in our, our expense line item, then I want to compensate us of the extra above what we say that we have for budget, whatever those two amounts are additional on top of what that budget is, instead of taking it out of our budget. Does that make sense at all?
No.
No?
I agree.
Well, I'm just saying that we need to increase the amount that we're saying that we're going to appropriate from general, from property taxes, by whatever the amount is for those two line items.
So, like, we're appropriating eighty-one percent?
Yes, if it's that, yes.
Eighty percent plus three hundred thousand?
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
So, it essentially becomes budget neutral, we're back?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
But we're also not taking a hit on our budget. Here's the thing.
We wouldn't be taking a hit on our budget if we made a budget.
Because three hundred thousand is, is a big chunk trying to get back, what, what's column? We're going to have to.
G?
G?
Eight, eight, three, four, maybe?
Sorry, I'll check the red.
Hmm?
I think it's eight, three, four, but it's a little blurry. Yeah, eight, thirty-four, I was. The red.
How much were the red?
So, there's a whole red sheet up here that they're looking at. That's what they're looking at.
Okay, but that's based upon the council numbers, right, Todd? That red number is?
Right.
So, that doesn't take into consideration any, uh, increases that we might have to.
That's what I know, contractual increases.
Yeah. Including the, does that take into consideration the sheriff's contract?
Yes.
It does, okay.
Sheriff's contract and the three percent rate.
Okay.
But no contractual obligations that are going up.
Like your move software.
I think that's what Dr. Green was saying, we're, we're going to have to figure out something, because there's many components that are really, I don't know. You've got to figure out, have to figure out how to balance those. Until you figure out how to balance those three components. You're never going to be able to budget.
I, I was, I was trying to stay away from line item discussion tonight.
I understand, I, okay, sorry.
And trying to get more conceptually at where, how are, how are we going to approach these large items? In other words, we have to pay for the election. You know, we, there, there are just certain things we, we have to pay for the operations of the jail. How we do that, in other words, one example would be the jail staff got a twenty percent increase a few years ago. The rest of the county didn't, didn't get increases.
Yeah, I think that, well, the year that they got the twenty percent, I think the council gave a five percent across the board deal.
I don't know. There was across the board, I don't know.
I don't think we ever given a five. Three percent, we've given a one percent, and zero percent, and.
Two years ago, you don't think it was five? You think it was three?
Three. Three, and in order to that, it was lump sums.
I guess my, my, my point is, we, we, you know, whatever you, whatever you decided back then, there, there was, there was clearly a will to say, boy, these folks are really under, underpaid, let's, let's get them up, which is part of what prompted, it sounds like, the mayor officer discussion, which is. Right, but, you know, I mean, so, and fine, except that, uh, do, do we give three percent to the jail staff who just got a twenty percent raise? Or if we don't do that, for example, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about in large picture, to say, does everyone get the three percent raise? Or do we isolate some of those out, recognizing we need to save some money for people who already got big raises? You know, the, the jail commander went from sixty-eight thousand to a hundred thousand. They get three percent, well, you know, okay, except that, well, that's being taken from somewhere else. Does that make sense?
It does, but the reason that, I'm just going to say, the reason that that one went up so dramatically was because she was also getting overtime.
I, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I, I'm not picking one.
No, I know you're not picking any, I know, I know.
So, in the end, we have this roughly one point eight allocation of initial resources. And, and if, whatever we come up with, it has to come up with more than one point eight. I, I, you know, so, um, what I, what I'd really like for us to do is to, as, as individuals, and thinking about the liaison response, and other ways we have to your, you know, look at your departments, and, um, try to identify what, in the basis, on the basis of the conversation you have in those departments are, are critical, you know, or contractual. And, uh, because there isn't going to be, I mean, to, to your point earlier, there isn't going to be any margin or extra for anything else. I mean, it's, we have these, the three percent, the election, the sheriff, the, the FICA retirement. I mean, if all we do is take those four things, we've consumed them. And we, we haven't addressed the critical need from the prosecutor's office for the acts on contract, I, I mean, like, it's a lot. Or the two hundred and sixteen-three thousand dollars for the request for the sheriff, for the, for the cameras and, and all, and the technology that they feel like they, that was being paid on our. So, anyway, I, in some ways, I'm just asking you to do your homework. I know you will do that, in order for us to have a meaningful and productive conversation. And what I'd really like, ideally, is for each of us to come with a suggestion about how we think it should be fixed.
An entire suggested budget?
What's that?
Like an entire suggested budget?
Well.
Or just.
Maybe not by line, but by taking these large things and saying, in order to make that one point eight, this is what I do. I, I mean, in some ways, we're, we're all accountable to that, right? Everybody's responsible to, what would you do to make that one point eight number?
And I think that's, that's a frustrating part of being through this a few times, is that nobody wants, it, nobody wants to take any money away from anybody, and then you sit here in a public meeting, and, and, and you want people to, to approve of what you say. That's fine, but then give me a solution. Okay, if, you, you don't, you don't want to do this, but okay, then what's your solution? Um, I think that's the most frustrating part, so, yes, why, I don't want to take this away from the treasure, or whatever. But, okay, that's fine, you don't want to take that away from treasure, well, then, where's it going to come from? You know, so. Thank you, I like that idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think it creates a level of responsibility for all of us, and I have, I mean, I, I feel like I, I have enough experience with us, of us working together, that everyone will come with, there's.
Well, I think that, you know, having gone through this a couple of times, there's probably sixty percent of our departments that we can look at it, check off, and say, yep, we're, we don't have to do anything.
That's exactly what happened, there's about sixty percent.
Right, and then you go back to those.
I didn't have to do anything with them.
Go back to the other departments that, you know, might have small increases, and you're like, okay, we, we need to fund that, that's a small increase. Then we get to the larger departments that have larger requests, and then, then we have to decide, okay, you know, are we going to fund all that? And if not, or if we are, how are we going to fund it? And if not, where are we going to take it away from, or whatever? Uh, that brings me back to that same point, and I wasn't meaning to get into the individual line items. But I just feel like we have to be accountable for those two line items in the commissioners' budget, which are substantial, that we've always paid unappropriated before, because there was enough funds within the, the pot to be able to pay them, even though they weren't appropriated, appropriated. And now you want us to appropriate it, now that's taking money away from our normal.
From other stuff.
Our normal process of budgeting. So, all I'm saying is, I want to add to our top line of what we have, those amounts, so it is general, so it is what you're saying?
It's, it's, whatever you, unless whatever you're taking, taking away.
Yes.
If you think we're going to have, we're going to collect this amount minus, we think, three hundred thousand less than that.
Well, and, and I know we're even going to collect probably more than what those two line items are. I'm not asking for all that, I'm just asking for an additional amount added to the top of what our budget's going to be that takes into consideration those two line items, that's all I'm asking. And maybe y'all are saying no, but I'm just saying that would definitely help in our budgeting process, because that's a pretty substantial amount of money.
The other question I had, Todd, is, is there, of, of all of these other funds, and, and, forgive my ignorance here, but I, I looked through all of these funds that you, there's a term for it, but just the, well, the financial report by funds.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And, and, I mean, there's all of these funds, and, and I don't have any idea what the criteria for use, like, what's, what's included in that fund? I mean, there's a fund that has three hundred thousand, there's a fund that has fifteen million. Like, can, can, what do we use that for? Can we use that for anything in this budget conversation we're having on any of these funds? It's a hundred million dollars, and that seems remarkable to me. Uh, so it feels like we should have plenty of resources to do what we feel like we need to do. But, on the other hand, if it's a situation where we, we can't spend any of the capital asset fund, unless the commissioners say, well, we want to do that, you know, like, we have to agree, right? You know? So, my question is, is there any of these funds in which, public safety funds, or I say, that we.
We have a public safety fund.
We, we can, like, that we can, that we can offload. Does that make sense? What I'm asking, you know?
And that's the one fund that, that you can take that, that critical, that is the public safety fund.
Can you give us the amount that you anticipate coming in on that fund? Because I know there's that, we have to take the radio bonds off of that first.
Yeah, the radio bonds, them off first, but that never shows up in the public safety fund. They get pulled off before you build into that fund.
Right.
So, if you'll see in there, like, there's a two thousand and fifteen sinking fund, you've probably seen that. That's the money that gets peeled off before the public safety money is deposited into the eleven seventy fund. So.
It goes in, that's the.
One of those weird funds that probably has four hundred thousand dollars in there.
We need, I, I feel like we need to know if, like, the county public safety fund here, it's a, we began with two point five billion, and we now have five billion.
Right.
Well, what, what can that be used for? Can that be used?
We have a public safety budget.
Yeah, we have a public safety budget, but, but to your point, Dr. Green, you could, you could, um, off, if you're, what you're getting at, is the thing is, you could offload expenses in, into the public safety.
Into that fund, out of the general fund.
Yes, for example.
That's what I'm trying to say.
For example.
Public safety back into general.
Okay.
And we, last year, we did a year round, so we actually put stuff back in the.
Like the call center part of it?
But it's all appropriated, right?
Right, so, I guess what I'm looking for is the guidance here, like, what, what are our options?
Can you, can you send out what you anticipate in revenue after the bond is taken off?
I sure will.
Uh, so we know how much is going to be in there, so we can.
I'd be glad to. And I, I should be able to have that to you by the budget, the next budget meeting. States do out a big year, it's one sixteen, so we'll have a big four year budget, nineteen, that can be. So, at that point, too, we ought to have a whole lot better handle of revenues. When essentially, that revenue chart, I have a lot of them highlighted, you know, those are wild guesses. We're going to stab in the numbers when they come in, and then we'll have all the numbers at the states on time. And then, the only thing we'll be waiting for is the, the CNAS, or the certified N S S values, and that'll start, that'll impact your levies, okay? So, that'll probably won't be here by your meeting, but it should be well before the, the public hearing, too. So, that'll start moving levies around, okay? Because what happens is, you have one rate fund, which is a Q bridge fund, it'll establish that levy, and those other like levies will adjust.
So, you, you're, you're anticipating that by the time we get with our, done with our meeting next Tuesday, we have a document?
We're going to be really close on the revenues, with the exception of the CNAS, okay? Which, which will shift levies around.
What is? Is sufficient to be able to send a public for a year?
Yeah.
Will, will, will we have a budget sufficient to send a public for a year?
Yes, it'll be, if, if you do a lot of work on the nineteen, to get through most of the general fund, you'll publish the closest budget this county's ever published in history, okay? So, that excites.
And therein lies the goal.
Yeah. Historically, we've always published nine million dollars, or eight million dollars over what we even have for revenue. This year, if you stay on course and get through that general fund, we will publish the closest budget to what you end up with, that has ever happened in this county.
Okay.
If we publish it, and we raise one dollar, it takes five people to pass. What was that?
Well.
Can you, can you speak out?
So, bring, uh, bring your, uh, ready to work to pass, okay?
What is that?
If it was raised by one dollar from what's been published, it takes five votes.
Of the seven?
Yes. You're talking about the overall number, right?
Any line item, tell you the line.
It's, it's published to the public.
That was the one AM.
Sunday in the morning.
What? I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't remember.
You blocking that trauma?
Well, and I truly believe, guys, that after next, our next budget hearing, we're, we're already talking about and, and agreeing on certain things within that budget already. So, it's not like somebody has arbitrarily said, let's do this, and here's the budget, and then we come back and we're like, no, we don't. no, we don't agree with that, because we didn't talk about that, but we're talking about it now. So I don't think we're gonna have those issues going forward.
So we wanna have as much information as possible, so we can have the, we can have the income side, and we can have everybody come with their views as to how we're going to make 1.8, then we have to just come to some level of agreement that can be published, so that ideally, to Rob's point, whatever is decided beyond that, isn't any more than that.
Well, I think too, that after our next meeting, before we publish, we need to send it back to the department head so that they can see that budget, and if there's something within there that's like, I absolutely cannot do what you're asking me to do, that they can listen if we made a... A mistake, sometimes we make mistakes and they...
Make something out.
Yep.
The other thing is, we need to make sure we supplement funds, I mean, they're, we always get mixed up, and they always, you didn't include this, you didn't include that, and you...
One thing we did this year, we thought would help the council with the miscellaneous funds, we put it in the exact same format, essentially that the other funds were in, so that you have historical information and you can see, see changes, you can see what's happening.
So we, you do need to come prepared for the additional funds, to make sure you've done your homework there. So I wanna make sure I've got dates probably, because we're coming to 9:00 tomorrow, I was gonna try and get you down to 9:00 tomorrow, so... Our meeting is next week on the 19th, that is three weeks prior to the 9th, which is our next, which is our public meeting. Right? When does it have to go to the public, uh, to make sure the public has plenty of time to review it prior to the 9th?
I need to, uh, have it published 10 days before that public hearing, okay? Now, the only advantage we have is that it's gateway, so it's an instantaneous publication, okay, but I still, I, I need...
So, the August 29th?
I, I would say, um, the 27th would be a great day, because that gives me three days to, to format the Excel sheet into a supplement, and I can actually upload.
So here's what we're gonna do, uh, I'm, uh, is there anyone who, if there was a need for a meeting, could not make the 26th? Tuesday, just the next Tuesday.
So, all on Tuesday.
Yeah, I could not make that, you cannot.
What's that?
I can't make that day.
You couldn't make that day?
But you guys, I mean, I'm...
Well, or we'll find a day that, if, if there's, if it's possible. Um, I'm just trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to plan a contingency, I am really hopeful we will not need this day, but also, if we do, we need to be prepared for it.
Monday, the 25th?
I can't do the 25th.
Monday, the 25th?
I could do later than the 27th, 28th.
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking it's about the 27th. I, I, what's, I could, we could push, if, we could push it to the 27th.
Is the 4 o'clock the prohibitor or is that...
I'm gonna be on the, I'll stay.
What the, uh, Friday, the 22nd?
It's a Friday.
Seriously, Rob?
Yeah, I, um...
Um, I, I'm, I'm open.
I think the 21st, that's two days after, but I don't know, after the 19th.
I can't.
For 21st?
He said he can do the 22nd.
He can, he can, he can do the 22nd.
That's what you said again.
Oh.
So, the 21st is a Thursday, is that, are you, is that when you're going?
No, I, I would be here.
No, sorry, I was talking to Chris.
I have a church board meeting, but I can maybe get out of that, so, for the good of the county.
I'm probably good, I don't know.
If that's what works for everyone else, I can get an excuse out.
Is there, is there anyone for whom the 21st is otherwise not impossible?
This is a contingency day.
I, I, again, well, let me ask you this.
I can be here for, but, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, 20 times, you need to advertise.
We'd have to advertise it ahead of time.
You're fine on that, it's, it's, uh, because you're not technically doing additional preparations, it's a two-day window to advertise, and I'll just advertise and vote at the same time, at the 19th and 21st will work for you.
Well, let me ask, uh, one more question about this, I, uh, so the 19th, would you prefer to meet longer than four hours, if that's what it took, if you could be done, so you didn't have to do the 21st?
As long as it's earlier, yeah. I mean, if we did it earlier?
I'm talking about 4 to 10.
No.
No.
No, 3 to, yeah, 3 to.
I don't, I don't have a hard time with it.
Your 3 o'clock, here with 3, okay.
Yeah, we were pushing 4, I think, so...
4 is doable.
We're at, we're at 4.
And I can't do 4 on the 21st, but if you guys need to, that's fine.
I can wait, I can wait.
You could go later, or, or you can't do the 21st?
I can, but it has to be later.
I'd rather me 2, that's just me.
I'd rather say late.
I know, you gotta get it early.
I'm definitely working on that.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to be done the 19th, like, we can advertise it without it being completely done.
Because we can advertise it higher.
Yeah, if you just advertise it higher. I mean, it's a deal to get it done on the 19th.
Well, you guys who've been through this before...
We can advertise it higher, but then we're gonna have to make cuts in public, which is fine.
But the lines, that, that's where you get tripped up, is the lines, it's not as, I mean, it's easy to advertise it higher at the end, the, the big number, but you won't know which lines need to be obviously gonna be, you can't count on that, that's...
Well, that, that seems to have generally been the sticking point, is, is the line.
We just need to do our homework this week, we need to be prepared to come in again.
I'm, I'm hoping if we come in prepared, we, we can, we can make it out. I'm, I'm, I'm believing that, but I also, you're not, you're not...
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if you look at the majority of your funds, you know, your departments, we're not gonna have to make changes in those, so we can, we can go through those really quick, you know, on that day and say, um, these are the ones, these are the funds that have, I don't see any changes in, um, are we good with those? Is there anything that I'm missing that one of you guys have talked to them or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Um, get those out of the way quick, and then we need to be prepared to discuss the other bigger departments, and to, to make, have to result, you know, have, have suggestions on how we can do that. But if we can get at least a number for the public safety, that'll help, because if we have to push something up the sheriffs over there, we can, because that's public safety.
Or the prosecutor's.
The prosecutor was an issue.
Yeah, his software could be pushed.
I don't, I'm, I'm saying the prosecutor's office was kind of a touchy subject about whether or not the public safety, wasn't it?
But you could start with central dispatch.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Again, if, if, if you could move one, one of them, it would be helpful to, for, to ease the burden. So, Todd...
Are we not taking the 21st?
Todd, Todd, so, yes, if you can, if you can announce the 4, advertise 4 o'clock on the, on the 19th.
19th and then 21st.
And 5 o'clock on the 21st.
5 o'clock on the 21st.
Yep.
Okay, I'll do it.
If we don't need the 2nd, then we...
And if we don't need the 2nd, we will all just thank God and not talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, we are not making bets, no, you can go to the casino.
There's a new revenue line, ladies and gentlemen.
Paul, do they make a bet line? Can't wait to read about it.
Okay, hey, guys, uh...
Is God gonna make a motion to adjourn?
And just, yes, actually, I wanna make sure everyone signs these, um... Yes, so we do need a motion, a motion for adjournment. Five, five, it will be 5 to 8.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Counselor Nord?
Yeah, I know, right?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Counselor Cole? Is there any discussion, we talk about it for a few more minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and a folks. Okay, please sign your name before you leave.
Okay, they're adjourned, so that's what you got to see.